Yeah, I'd like to officially again welcome everybody for tonight's meeting. We've already had our close and we're gonna move on with our regular. David, would you like to come up and make your presentation to council that you'd like to do?
Yes, I would.
Make an announcement here so everybody can see you, so the camera can see you down there, and people can hear you.
Very good.
You go.
Okay, well, I will start with a presentation to my mayor.
Of course.
Official Tree City USA hat. I would like to thank you for being a part of the celebration.
Thank you.
And I have here an official Tree City USA pin. Make sure it was all... It puts lots of holes in your shirts.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
As you're welcome.
We pour more dirt in each other.
Well, that's why I wanted to stand on the front. Because next year, we're gonna have another one, which will be the 21st.
I said I saw you break a brick for your parents.
I'm always waiting for a golf hat.
And, and the mayor, I know that you had the opportunity to see this in the past.
Would you like me to help hold the stage?
Yes.
I got him, mayor. Yeah, let the camera zoom in on us there. I'll move closer back a little bit.
So we have the official Tree City USA banner for the town, and I want to make sure...
This makes how many years?
Uh, this is the 20th year.
Nineteen.
Oh, sorry, 19th is?
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. I get ahead of myself. I'm already anticipating the 20th.
Yes.
Because I have to record all the submissions that go to...
Next year, yes.
Together.
Thank you, guys, for the phenomenal job you do.
Well, thank you.
It's absolutely appreciated all through town, especially from the council.
There's several topics I'd like to talk about. One in particular was brought up at the Urban Forestry Advisory Commission. And this is the sense that we've received over time is that we're not getting out a message, and that's the care of trees. And so I, what I need, I need your buy-in. I need you to back the organization in terms of educating the public. And it can be as simple as posting a link on the town website. And here are some of the examples of the different problems that we have coming on. And one of them in particular is called the spotted lanternfly. It's going to be the new Emerald Ash Bore of our region. It just entered Virginia this past winter. Instead of just one tree, it's going to affect 35 species. And one in our region, it affects one of the viticulture, the grape industry, and it is one of its favorite resources. So we, I know that they've, Virginia Tech has been holding seminars for them, but I don't think that our local citizens know anything about it. So it's this type of thing that I'd like to see posted if possible. I have a number of other documents that I brought in on a flash drive.
Which one do you want?
Go into the folder, the handout folder, and there's one that says 24 ways to kill a tree.
I'm sorry.
I think it's up here at the top. Yep, third one down.
Next one down.
And this is basically the type of information I would like to get out to the public. It's very simple. It's diagrammatic. It explains what really most people don't understand of why we are having problems with our trees. And this can be everything from, and I have to say, I made mistakes in the past, and that's how I've learned. When I worked for a municipality in Illinois, when the quote-unquote "three-way broadleaf killer" came out for grass weeds, I was good friends with our golf course superintendent, and this is back, I hate to say I'll run it though, but it was in the 80s, and he was saying, "You've got to try this. It gets rid of your clover, it gets rid of your henbit, it gets rid of all your chickweed," which the regular 2.4D was not touching. So I said, "Great," and I put it down. Now, unfortunately, there was an unforecasted rain that afternoon, but I had 120 oaks in the park, and I lost 20 of them. Part of that component is called dicamba, and dicamba is, is death on oaks, hickories, your nut trees, basically. And it's that sort of situation that people don't understand. When they keep on applying this material, year after year after year, it builds up in the soils, and eventually, the trees do succumb. Now, if it's straight 2.4D, it's not such a problem. But it's such as, over in, let's say, the other side of the ridge, in horse country, there used to be magnificent white oaks up and down these country roads. And it wasn't until they started using this three-way broadleaf killer on their pastures to reduce the amount of weeds, all of a sudden, the oaks are gone. And they don't know why. And that is why. So it's, I mean, we have a horse country here also in our, in our northern half of the county, but it's, it's this type of knowledge that I feel would be beneficial to the public in general to know. And it's these little detailed things. And of course, John, you would know for sure which type of trees are really something you can't plant next to a horse pasture.
I'd say I probably knows.
Well, that's one of the handouts, is which trees do you actually remove if you're gonna be using it for horses? And this is, this is the type of knowledge that, again, most people have no idea, and they wonder why their horses or their livestock start to decline. And it's because of simple little problems like this. There's another problem coming into town. It came out from the southwest Texas to Tennessee into southwestern Virginia. I didn't realize that it made it all the way up to Richmond. But those of us who have walnuts, at least walnuts that are harvestable, you have to know that now's the time to take them out. Because there's a disease called the 10,000 canter disease, 10,000 canter disease, excuse me. If you wait and let them go through the whole process and die, it'll be just like your ash trees. They won't be worth it to take down. Because the value of the wood with a dead tree versus one that's alive that you cut and then send to the mill is vastly different in terms of structural strength, in terms of the way it responds if it's to be at least a load-bearing surface. So, so now's the time to know that. And it's letting these sorts of little tidbits of information out that I think would help everybody in the long run. This handout is, represents some activities that the tree stewards have had ongoing for the past probably seven or eight years. They have work sessions that, that are actually tree plan. I will go with, and sit down with Ann Rose, your county viticultress, and we will review the types of activities that the tree stewards are capable of performing. And this won't be your big tree work, but it will be your, your younger trees where structural pruning, or safety pruning, lifting your canopy so that vehicles or people do not run into trees. I have to say that Ann and her crew do the bulk of, of all this type of work, but the tree stewards, what you're seeing there is a list of the types of things that we do. Everything in yellow is pretty much highlighted simply because the works leader who's going to be on that particular task must work with Ann in terms of either traffic control or something that involves a high degree of safety level. Because we can't have the tree stewards out in the street. They're wonderful people, but there's a limit on their, their world, because they're not used to it like somebody who works in the public work section all the time. They're out there, they know these vehicles, don't see anybody except the lines in front of them. So we've had a close call, and that's why I highlight everything in that situation. So if this isn't something that, I mean, I'd like you to be able to bring this up, talk about it, see the benefit of it, but if we could incorporate something either under the UFAK heading, I would appreciate it. And pretty much, that's why I'm here. It's really for UFAK in the whole, because it's the town that, that this is bringing benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and thank everyone that's involved in the UFAK and tree stewards, because everybody has a huge, huge benefit for you guys doing that kind of work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Police Department Radio Communication System Chief, would you like to come up and let us know what we need to get for you?
Yes, sir.
One more time, the sound's like a talking...
I seen him the other day, he was a brat. Oh, come a little bit, bring it up here a little bit, so that your voice carries.
Very good.
Mr. McCool, get on the other end, I'd like to get your cameras in.
All right, Mayor, members of council, I appreciate you for a few minutes this evening. So we've been researching options to address the existing radio communication system. The one that we're currently utilizing is, is aging. It does not currently share interoperability with Moore County Fire and Rescue, and will for too long, no longer be interoperable with the Moore County Sheriff's Office as well. They are in the process of migrating to another system, at which point in time we'll have to figure out some sort of patch to be able to communicate with them. We've been struggling with the shortcomings of the existing system for several years, and at times, it's just gotten dangerous. I know, I know some of you guys have been along, on the ride-alongs with some of our officers, and I don't know if you've ever, ever seen them do what we call the Statue of Liberty, where they actually have to take their portable out and raise it above their head trying to get service. Again, obviously, that's a, it's kinda hard to defend yourself if you're in that type of a situation. What we're currently using is an 800 LTR system. It is antiquated. We can't buy parts for it anymore, at least new. You can find something on eBay perhaps, but they, they no longer manufacture parts for it. And we don't own the system. Currently, we're, we have a vendor that provides the system. We purchased the subscriber equipment, the radios that are actually in the cars and on, on the portables that are on the belt, but this infrastructure, we're on that. So that's where we're looking to move towards, is actually purchasing a public safety radio system, designed for the type of work that we do. And what we're looking for is, is a system that is, a federal, the Project 25, P25 compatible system that we're looking at, would provide interoperability with, obviously, fire and rescue, county, state, would actually allow us to be able to, God forbid, we have a major incident, active shooter, something like that, we would be able to much more easily maintain unified command, because we'd be able to talk with the big red trucks and the guys in the brown uniforms. Makes a, makes a big difference to, to an operation such as that. So we've been given some preliminary estimates of about $550,000 to complete the project. Town Management Finance Director already identified about $50,000 of seed money to, to start the process, and we're exploring options to finance the project. So what we're requesting is council support as we continue to investigate viable options to resolve the issue that we're facing here. We're gonna have questions.
Chief, when was the last time we upgraded this equipment?
This is the same system that the county uses, and I started with them about 20 years ago. It's the same stuff that we did.
Joe, did you wanna add something before we go around any more?
I just wanted to let council know that our idea tonight was just to put it on council's radar. We have money in the budget for a debt service. The only question we don't know is, is how much is that ticket price gonna be, and how much that debt service will be. So we don't know if we estimate it high or too low.
Jake?
Is there any opportunity to, you mentioned the sheriff's department is looking to upgrade their system and change it. Is there any opportunity to piggyback on that and have a similar system or the same system in economies of scale?
We're talking to the same vendor, so they're going to be, obviously, it'll be utilizing the same, the same network. So we'll realize, we would realize a savings, obviously, back home with them, and the interoperability piece of it would be much easier, because it's all the same, same outfit. So that's, that's one of the things we're looking at. Obviously, their figure's much higher than ours, but you've got a much smaller geographic area to deal with. So our bottom-line figure's going to be lower. And again, this is a, this is a rough figure with, you know, list cost, prices for subscribed equipment, those types of things. And the vendor that we're dealing with, it's, they, they're on state contracts, so the pricing would be kinda where it is. We wouldn't have to do an RFP or anything like that, because it's a common price.
Jane?
Joe, going back to what you said, you said, "We have the money in our debt service?"
No, we have money for this next year's upcoming budget. We put $50,000 to be allocated for debt service on this project, if we had to borrow money to fund this project. So we did put money in this, this upcoming budget, FY19 budget, 50,000.
But we're, we're currently subscribing to a service? Do we pay a monthly fee for the service?
Yes.
Nominal, or something substantial that would actually offset some of this?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I can look into it, give back to you.
I was just wondering if it was actually something that'd be worth putting towards it, or if it's...
It's a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars.
It's gonna be nominal. It's nothing.
Kale, is it possible to get a safety grant for something?
Well, and that's one of the, that's, that's one of the things that we're looking at. The, the outfit that we're working with has a, has a section that deals with that, and we've, we've started working with them to try to see if we could identify anything along those lines. And that's one of the reasons that we're looking at the particular type of system that we're looking at. If we chose to go with something that was not P25 capable, which is this Project 25, it's kind of the federal mandates of how the radio systems work, in order to promote the interoperability between agencies. If we were to go another route rather than that, it closes a lot of doors for, for funding and those types of situations.
I'm just kinda curious. I've been on the council now for a long time. This is the first time I've heard we had major issues with our radio system.
Yeah, I understand.
And I, I, it just puzzles me that...
Well, they got you an analog. Everything went...
It's been on it 20 years ago.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I mean, being, being as critical it is, I'm surprised they cheated before you or even the one before that didn't bring it up to us, let us be aware. I mean, this is the chunk of money that we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
And right now, that chunk of money is gonna be hard to come back.
Right. I completely understand that. And again, we're just, we're planning for the future.
Well, I understand.
The system that we're dealing with is, is, again, it's antiquated, and the, the service provider is, there's an uncertain future there.
Do we know how far the service is?
What's the warranty on this new system?
Well, most everything is, is five years out of gate, but obviously, that's a...
So their service is the old one, and what's their?
The old one is serviced, serviced by the, the provider that is, that owns the, we currently use it for all communications. So they, they manage the system. As far as the, the subscriber equipment, we take care of that as it goes.
But this is gonna connect us with the sheriff, because the sheriff's gonna move forward.
Yes, sir.
Fire Department's moving forward.
Fire Department has always been, has been on that system for the last at least 10 years.
Yes, so we're gonna be getting up to speed, hopefully, in the next couple of years to, to be there.
Correct. I mean, at the end of the day, to put it bluntly, without, without making this type of a situation, we will be able to talk to the cab stands and the construction outfits.
Joe?
The one thing I wanted to add was, once Kale came on board, we realized, I knew that we had some, we called dead spots in town, but once Kale came on board, we kind of realized that the vendor that's actually servicing our equipment now, is, like I say, we don't know how long he's gonna stay in business.
I'm sure he was getting out there a couple of years.
And so that's when, when we started building the budget for FY19, is when we earmarked some money to, to move forward on this. And our intention is today is just to let council know what we're working on, and...
And it's coming.
And it will, something will be coming down the pike eventually.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kale.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions after meeting Kale? We're with him. All right. Use of the, probably, Humane Society. Last year, we had two trolleys, Joe, that we approved, and they used them heavily.
Yeah, to some degree, they did. I mean, they, what they did last year was they separated the two pickup and drop-off points. The previous year, they only asked for one trolley, and they only had one pickup and drop-off location. Last year, they utilized two, one over by Target and one by Walmart. So they're actually asking again for us to contribute to the use of two trolleys for that event in August, at a cost of, Ms. Hart was able to get us a quote on that, and that will be $1,159 for that event.
Jane?
I'm just, I'm just trying to think, where's the county fit into this? This is a county function.
This is Humane Society, not county.
Well, I know, but they're the ones that...
This is, where they...
Well, they raised money. Are they going to the county and ask them for any money?
Yeah, they get money, they get their regular budget, but this is for the canoe, what do they call it?
It's the wagons for drag.
Yeah, the wagons for drag.
The fundraiser event.
Now, I, I just wanna be sure that...
It was cumbersome.
We're all getting our fair share of this.
Well, we definitely get a good share. We get, I think they got $35,000, so that saved the taxpayers a lot of money, a lot of change.
I have no problem.
Yeah. Jake?
So, a little bit of a different angle from what Councilman Tewold's saying. How can we do this for the main society specifically, but not something that we do necessarily for any other organizations?
Where we run the trolley, and they just ask to take it specifically, had two trolleys for that event, because that event, they usually had a couple thousand people there, and they tried to park them over, maybe over to the Walmart, is that where they parked them last year?
Oh, last year, they had two locations, one at Target and one at Walmart.
It was, it was a simple way of getting citizens to that event, because it's very well-attended. For them to make $35,000, it was well, well-attended.
I'm not arguing that it was a, a good event. What I'm saying is, how do we differentiate from one organization from another organization asking to use the trolleys for free?
The government never has to use it.
And that's the other, was, as I remember it, this was the town called Royal sponsorship for the event. I believe we're credited as a sponsor for letting them use the trolley, but as near as I know, I've, in four years, I've, we've never had another group come and ask for it. So it's pretty specific.
So if another, another did, then...
We have the council to say yea or nay? Are you good with it?
Sure, in this, the estimate of dollars are if we're renting out the trolley, but not actual cost, correct?
Joe, there are actual costs.
That's actual cost for us.
Yes, that's, that's what we're charged by the hour from the trolley company.
So our sponsorship then is $1,200?
Yes. From their side, it's a little bit of sponsorship. From our side, we have to bear the cost of operating the trolley.
It's kinda like behind the scenes of the Salvation Army at the Chamber, same thing, Chamber, we sponsor the tables.
Plus staff had a boat in it last year. Staff raised over...
Yeah, we had a boat, we gonna have a boat in this year?
Staff, I've asked staff where, they haven't got back with me yet. But last year, we did, just paid, we did raise over 2,000.
Maybe the raw examiner puts a group together. Chris?
No, I have anything, I like you.
John?
Yeah.
Gary?
I have just one question I would have. What sort of, what impact does it have on residents who use the trolley here in town?
Oh, there are extra trolleys that they bring in for those folks.
Okay, then I'm all for it.
Bill?
Okay.
We're okay? We'll sponsor them, $1,200?
All right, we're being a consent agenda.
Okay.
Listen. One thing I would ask is that we work with the trolley, with, with the Humane Department, because I would like to have them capture numbers. How many people are actually riding the trolley? Because do we need to have it for that many hours? I mean, the drivers are keeping track of our ridership every day, and they see where the pickups are and that kinda stuff. So if we could work with them to make sure that we really do need two trolleys throughout that entire area.
Well, I think the reason why we used one, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but they used one to shuttle back and forth everywhere. Now they have two trolleys stationed at different points.
Sure.
Where people, they're not, they're trying to keep the people from going down into where the activities are. They're trying to get them to park at a satellite lot somewhere, but get with full attention.
But the only thing I would ask is that we have the trolley driver keep track of those numbers in the pickup, so we can see how many people are actually utilizing that service.
And that'll be good for next year.
Yes.
Right, and I think that's a good move, what Ms. Hart brought up, because therefore, we can analyze it and make our own educated decision to tell them that do they really need two? Because they did manage one for one year, and then we, we did entertain it last year for two, and now we're two again, so...
I mean, I think it's a great move for the council, because when they raise $35,000, that's $35,000 tax money they don't have to, to get from the county, which we all pay county tax of. It all runs out here. All right, moving on. Ordinance amendment for the adoption of reference of the State Vehicle laws. Doug?
This is something that the town does every year. The state allows us to adopt the state traffic code into the town, traffic code by reference. And this allows the police department to enforce as town ordinances the state traffic code. And that has two big benefits. One, it shortens the town code almost literally in half. And secondly, it allows traffic violations to be charged as town code violations, and the town gets to keep the fines as local tax money. And it has the effect of several hundred thousand dollars a year that we make off of it. So it makes it a whole lot more effective to help keep the roadways safe. We help fund the police department that way, and it's just all-around more effective. But we do have, by state law, we do have to re-adopt it every year.
You gonna have that ready for next Monday?
Yes, sir.
Jane?
I have two questions. Does that have to be advertised as a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the second thing is, you know, but last year or before, we had a problem getting the money from the court cases. Did we ever get that all worked out? Didn't that come through the county?
Yeah, it has to, and don't ask me why, I've never been able to figure that out, but it has to be, it's collected by the General District Court. It is set down to the state, I guess for auditing purposes. Then it's sent back to the Circuit Court, Moore County Circuit Court clerk, and then it's remitted back to the Finance Department. So there's a lag time, and why it goes through all that, other than possibly for audit purposes, that's the only thing I can say.
But we are getting the money eventually.
We are getting it, it just takes a few months, lag time, to get it.
Just clear.
Yeah, I, I don't know why you go through all those steps, but that's smarter people than me to understand.
Anyone else have any questions?
Huh?
It's called beer rockers.
I had to think of the same exact...
We do have to take that through public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Plan and commission resignation. Mr. Gussie has moved on. He leaves a seat that he, we need to fill. Jennifer, how many people do we have that we can inter... Jennifer, how many people do we have that we can interview for that seat?
We only have three interviews scheduled for your next work session. And we have advertised to see if we can get any more.
All right, gentlemen, you good for six o'clock for the three interviews?
I think we have them starting at 6:30.
6:30?
Because they usually...
I don't think we started anybody. Because three, that's 15 minutes apiece, that's 45 minutes.
Well, even if we start at 6:30, we'll do what you'd like.
Yeah, what, what do you want, six, 6:30?
6:30.
I don't care, I'm not worried. Whatever these guys at work.
I need 6:30.
6:30 is a lot easier for me to handle.
That was my thought, I was trying to make sure everybody could get it.
Are you consensus, consensus says 6:30? No.
They don't have, you don't have to be finished, guys, that one's true.
Oh, I know we don't have to be finished, but, you know, I mean, I like to keep that train rolling. All right. Under council discussion goals, time permitting, anybody have anything to bring up? Gene?
I got one thing, and I've been paying attention to it in town, is we haven't painted any curbing for the last 20 years, apparently because...
Painted last year. Year before last. Oh, they had some machine that went around?
Well, I, I can't see it. I, I rode around town today, and almost all of it is either gone or it looks so shabby. And make sure, if we do paint, get the regular highway yellow, and not that other type of yellow that we used a couple years ago. It's gonna never be painted by some, because I like to see it match with the center lines instead of that bright yellow that we normally had before.
You must be in my head, Gene, I was thinking the same thing today. I was driving down, I was like, man, these curves are really faded back.
Actually, they've only been working well on the fire hydrants, they've only been attacking those.
Yeah. I'll get tile dress up, Gene.
Anybody else? Appreciate it.
You have something, go ahead, go ahead. Under the stops program, we've been meeting monthly. We're taking a real study plan on Shenador Avenue. Pedestrian safety is one of our major concerns. We're looking at a crosswalk for pedestrians that is well-marked, well-lit, different kinds of signals to alert that cross, crossing is in effect. It's gonna be not as pricey as I thought, but it will have a price to it, and I'll be coming to you in one of our sessions very soon to discuss how we can finance that. We're gonna look at Shenador Avenue first, and we're also going to move to South Street Second. And we're gonna take a long look at that study that came out in 2015 by VDOT. So, we're gonna have to do something with pedestrian safety. And I know we, we're working on the education piece, we're working on ordinance for jaywalking, we're working on improvements in all the crosswalks. But, you know, the price of the life is far much more than, you know, 10,000, or 20, or 100, whatever figure that we want to put onto it, but the life in this community is well worthwhile to save.
Bill, what's, what's going on with the ordinance for jaywalking? Because I tell you, I get so frustrated knowing all the work that we're doing, and even, now we're talking about costs, and people aren't using the crosswalks, crossing right in front of the Motel 6, or crossing from any point from Martin's on down, and, and with full confidence of just walking out there, and all the cars are gonna hit their brakes. So, I see that all the time, and it drives me nuts knowing what we're doing, trying to...
It drives a lot of our residents crazy too, because I get these calls to discuss that very issue.
I hit one the other day.
The chief has a program where he is hitting every, um, menu in our community, such as school kids, the senior citizens, um, trying to think of all of them, there was a list of 10. Of course, we were on the River 95-3, Sergeant Robbie Seal and myself discussing this very issue, and discussing that fact that you just brought up, the, the prime time on South Street is 3 to 7. There's five months of the year that is, really caused us a lot of issues in this community. Crossing over, you know, if you look at a lot of the codes, they'll tell you that you cross at corners, not in the middle of the streets. And I'm surprised, you know, our delineators, people run over them. So, one guy just flat...
How many of them have we replaced on, on South Street?
I can't.
Well, we removed them there for a while.
I know we lined, we replaced a bunch of them.
That's how we did line painting and stuff, yes.
I can address some that are jaywalking on, is, I've done all the legal research on that, and we're trying to figure out the best way to educate the public on actually enforcing an ordinance. You know, do we need to put up signage, or do we not need to put up signage? It's actually already in the state code that we could enforce it the way it is, but I think we probably need to put it in, in the town code, because it's part of the motor vehicle state codes, which we incorporate into our town code, but I think we need to make it a specific part of the town code. And then, because this is part of what we're trying to debate in the town, not all streets have crosswalks, and so, do we need to notify the public that if a street has crosswalks, do you need to notify people to, you know, cross at an intersection or cross where there's a crosswalk? Because that's what the state code says.
I know if there's no crosswalk, you don't cross. If there's a crosswalk, you can cross. Well, unfortunately...
Does that have to get?
Well, that's not what the state code says. I can send you the state code, but we've got to educate people how you, how you do it.
Now, Doug, you're working closely...
Crogger's not a real-life thing.
Doug, you're working closely with Kale and Bill.
Yeah, we, we are.
Trying to figure out how to get this, I mean, it's been a year, and, and there's been some great strides made with getting markings, but there are a lot of people that will walk five feet away from it and cross, you know, so I don't know.
Yeah, there are people that you want to...
It's definitely an ongoing project, that's for sure.
I'm not hitting somebody at the Royal here at the OAG.
Christopher?
Oh, thank you, there's two things. One, one is in reference to Mr. David Gussie. I just wanted to say that he is an incredible person, and he's gonna be irreplaceable as far as what he contributed to this town. And I wish him well in Atlanta, and I hope his back gets better so he can enjoy Atlanta with his son. But I'm a better person because I got to know him, so I just wanted to say that on record. And then the other thing is, I'm losing my voice, is the effectiveness of the street sweeper? I don't know who to address this question to.
You, Chris?
Town manager.
So, my question is, how effective can it possibly be when the cars are not being relocated?
They drive around them?
Yeah, they drive around them.
I, I lived in, as well, to add to that, I lived in an area in Savannah, Georgia, where we had sweep, sweeper come, and you had to move your car on certain days, certain hours, so they could actually get where the cars are, because it's like otherwise 20 to 30% effective. And we have a lot of all-street parking or one-street parking, so we have this brand-new truck, but how effective is it due to policy and practice?
I don't know what the schedules, I mean, they, I see it out there all the time.
Yeah, it's out there full tilt.
Whoever calls, got a dirty street, they call, shake, and you just...
But your street's gonna be, you know, it'll be all stuffed, so...
Sure, yeah, it goes under one vehicle.
You're talking on ordinance or something there that...
We tried 10 years ago with snow removal, and it just doesn't work. My, you know, having them on left side, right side, times this and that. And we tried to enforce it, and we took one to court and the judge threw it out, so it was, it was a bit amount that did not...
Unenforceable.
It was unenforceable, because people work, and they parked their car during the day when they needed to clean and move, and the judge just said, "Just please, man, do it."
And unfortunately, our streets are dotted with vehicles, that people just have parking there. They're legal, they have tags, they have inspection, they have insurance, and they're legally able to park there next to the curb. People can pull in front of your house and park and leave it for days and weeks and months if they want, as long as they're legal, correct of.
Most part is.
Yeah. But I totally understand what you're saying, because all the debris washes under that one particular vehicle.
Yes.
The street sweeper cannot get it, he's not gonna get out with a broom to reach under there, he just has to go around it and... But, Joe, if you can think of anything?
Yeah, I can get with staff, and we can...
Next time you have your staff, just to see if, you know, I know we have those problems with antique cars that are sitting along, and they have years of building them up, so...
Well, you know, we used to do most of the sweeping at night. In fact, I'd bring the crew in, let my man come in at 6:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night and work during the night, and that wasn't effective either, because then the people would be home, and cars are there. The next morning, you'd be right back to square meters again. So, we never did figure a way out to get the streets swept properly.
Always a juggle.
Yeah.
Any other council member have anything before I say something? Everybody good? Okay, as everybody knows, Main Street, the ordinance says, if you have a business on Main Street, you're entitled to use the town parking lot. There's no parking requirements of 1, 2, 4, 5, 8 spaces. For some apparent reason, Chester Street has always been left out. So, I have a request from a business owner that would like to send this back to planning to see what they think about adding Chester Street from Main to Laurel into the ordinance that says that they can actually use the town parking lot as their parking area requirements. Would that be a kind of a true thing to say? If they can bring it back in?
Um, you can refer that to the Planning Commission.
So, council has no problem, if I can get a consensus to send it to the, to the planning, to let them maul it over and see what they got to say? Okay. Jeremy, could you have town planning to, or Joe, whatever y'all need to do? Send it to them and let them maul it over and... Anybody else? Joe, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Meeting adjourned. Have a nice evening.